I just want to take a moment to thank Loxie for all of her years of service. All of her years of service.
This is her last meeting. Her very last school committee meeting. Look at all the audience. Amazing. Turn it out. They can guess they'll watch on YouTube.
Yeah, we've been celebrating with Loxie.
We've been celebrating all week. It's been a very emotional week.
Yeah, sure. She looks so nice and relaxed, doesn't she? She only has, what, a week and a half?
Seven days.
Seven days. So, thank you for all of your...
We're crossing everything off the list.
Yes, we have lists.
A very capable hand.
Okay, we don't really have anything to do here. We had lots of... Well, she's not going to be here, right?
Right.
So, we had all the awards, right? We had awards. Did you attend any of the awards?
Mr. Bertrand was at the awards.
Did you attend both?
The middle school and... Or the eighth grade as well as the underclass.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I had one in each.
Okay, and they were ninth?
Oh, they were right.
I went to the eighth grade.
It was, yeah.
It was really nice to hear the teachers' comments on all the students.
And of course, a great job this morning. The eighth grade course.
Oh, yeah.
The band, that was all very well done.
All the middle school grade level award ceremonies were very, very nice. Very well attended by parents. And that's hard. We know with parents needing to make arrangements with their work schedules and everything. Lots of grandparents, some siblings as well, so it was nice. And the students are always so respectful and also so very supportive of their peers. And they really rejoice in watching the awards and the recognition.
I think they enjoyed seeing their teachers up there as well.
I think so, yes, that's true. You can see those very important connections the teachers make with the students. They're front and center during those ceremonies like that. So, it's been a wonderful week, and I know everybody's anxious for summer to come.
Yeah, it's a nice half day.
And being on break.
And the weather turned out perfect for it.
And even the hot day on...
Monday.
Monday in this building was very comfortable. And given that Turkey Hill is so very close, they can walk up. And they did that in the afternoon. They had an event in the auditorium. When the heat loads started to really... So, we continue to be just very grateful for this beautiful city. And the class of 1953 is going to visit next ten members. They're having a reunion, and they contacted me, and we're going to do a tour of the building. And I'm really looking forward to that happening.
And when are they doing that?
I think it's Wednesday.
Okay. We have warrants on the table to approve. And we have minutes to... Did you guys review and...
And we had some spelling and just template problem, and we fixed both of those. I think I reset the minutes out when we...
Do we have our policy? Can you see that? So, I made a motion to approve the minute.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Regular session, May 23rd. Executive session, May 23rd. Regular session, June 6th. And executive session, June 6th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve policy committee meeting minutes from May 23rd.
Bye. We're good now? Yeah, we're all good. And then superintendent's report.
Yes. Well, welcome. As we said, just a wonderful week of ceremonies and move-up days and those kinds of things going on. And we wish everyone a very safe, healthy, happy, restful summer full of reading. From the primary school, we sent home all the information about Footsteps to Berlions. We also put that in an article that the Ledger will be publishing this week. So, it's out there for the community. And you know Officer Zaret has agreed, he and Chief Marino agreed that Officer Zaret can give the grand prize winner a right to school. And that person can invite a friend to be part of that right to school. And they all... Our students also have access to the broader regional awards where the top three readers get some electronic devices. And so, we encourage everyone to keep reading. I know that across the district, teachers have suggested reviewing for students and encouraged that to happen, so we don't have that summer slide. Of course, our AP classes, they jump in and get started right away. So, many students will be busy, but summer's the time for families, and I know that everybody's looking forward to that as well. We also, in the article to the Ledger, I did include, we don't have all the specific dates yet, but we gave everybody heads up around the lifelong learning program, especially the adult rec programs that are offered. Soccer in the fall, as well as the women's basketball will start up again. And the health and wellness program that Mr. Boone does will be going again as well. So, those announcements are out there. We'll make sure those get posted up to the website. And I wanted to make everyone aware that Pam Valley, who did a marvelous job initially getting our Google website all together and up, over time, it's kind of taken on a life of its own. But Pam's going to tame that back down again and get it all refreshed and make sure that this is all accessible. And so, by the middle of August, August 15th, she'll have all the websites updated with all the new information of all the new hires, of course, the new superintendent's information being up there. All of that will be ready to go for the fall. So, I really appreciate Pam taking that on. It's a very big task, and she's doing that as her master teacher project next year. So, that's very exciting. I wanted to let you know Eliza's not here to give a report, but Eliza was elected as the Senate President. Girl state is where she's at. And I have some other announcements, but we have a special guest here. Our Project 351 representative, Emily Begley, is here. And she has created a PowerPoint for all of you to review her experience. So, welcome, Emily. Also, over there, if you want to just give me a key or you want me to fast-forward, you will.
All right. So, as some of you might know, my name's Emily Begley, and I'm an eighth grade Project 351 ambassador for Lunenburg.
What is going on here? It was working a minute ago, wasn't it? Well, let's do something else.
Well, we're doing that. Project 351 is a nonprofit organization that supports unsung heroes and quiet leaders. And every year, one eighth grader from every city and town in Massachusetts gets chosen to represent their town, and I was chosen this year to represent Lunenburg. And in January, you go to Boston for the day, for launch day. And I went to the JFK Museum for a morning of learning about inspirational service heroes. Some of them consisted of the first lady, Warren Baker, Martin Richard, who would have been an eighth grader this year, and he got to be an honorary service member. Ellen DeGeneres and many more inspiring people. After the morning ended, we got bussed off to five service sites. My group and I got bussed off to the Pine Street Inn, and we made lasagna rolls, the lasagna roll-ups, and did team-building activities while still managing to squeeze in a tour of the Pine Street Inn. My service hero was Ellen DeGeneres during launch day. There were so many people taking pictures, and our goal was try to get onto Ellen's show. That was what our group wanted to do. But each group was given... Each group of many people was given a person to look up to. And then, after we finished our service, we went back into the JFK Museum, and we reflected on what we took out of our service. And after that, we obviously went home, and then we learned about our next thing that we would have been doing. And our next thing is spring service. And spring service is a clothing drive that was held throughout all three schools in Lunenburg. And it was to support Kratos de Kranz. And Kratos de Kranz is a nonprofit organization that helps kids get the things they need to make them feel good. And I was collecting shirts, pants, books, new socks, and underwear. I was collecting clothes through all three schools. And I also had a movie night at our school back in March, and that's on the next slide. And a few of ambassadors and my group leader came to help me support that, to help support that. And I collected 309 pairs of socks and 266 things of underwear. And then, at reunion, which was a few weeks ago, we worked... We did different service sites again, and I worked at the Fresh Truck. And then, also, I believe that's it. But then, also, each year, they give out one scholarship to a graduating senior, the Meyer Craft Scholarship, which is $20,000 to a senior. And the senior that got it was Jack Mayer, who is from... Was in Lunenburg. He got chosen for Lunenburg. So, that's pretty cool. Yeah. And then, my next thing is fall service, which will happen in the fall, which is a food drive.
Thank you, Emily, for representing Lunenburg so well. And I know you continue to have those opportunities going forward with the reunion day. And you always make us so very proud. And you have had an opportunity now to reach out and meet so many wonderful examples of folks who are giving back to their communities, and you fit right in with them. I had the opportunity at the Spring Superintendent's Association meeting to hear four former Project 351 graduates, if you will, who are now in college and who are doing some remarkable work, that they use 351 as a springboard. And it was just quite remarkable. And reinforced for me what I always say to people when they say, "Oh, my goodness, what's the future hold?" And I always say, "I've worked with so many wonderful children. The future is very bright for us because we have such caring, giving, and talented students." And you're a classic example, and thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
And best wishes.
Thank you.
I also wanted another Emily. Another Emily, Nash, of course, won the state women's golf championship by four strokes, I believe. And of course, for Lunenburg, we're pretty proud because that's our second state championship this year. I wanted you to know that the middle school, my first year, we've had Zion's Olympiad for many years, and they were 14th in the state. So, after many years of not having that opportunity to be able to come back and not just come back, come back very strong and achieve that high ranking is really quite remarkable. I also wanted to let you know that Emily was recognized... Emily Nash was recognized as Worcester Telegram All-Star last night at a banquet. And all of their students from Lunenburg, athletes from Lunenburg that were recognized were Jacob Marau, Connor Viviano, Declan Fitzpatrick, and Nathan Bujalais.
Bordelais.
Bordelais, thank you. All for hockey. You probably recognize that. And Sarah Blumberg was for basketball. And Kelly Guerin was for lacrosse. And Abigail Cosio was honored... Received an honorable mention for softball. So, congratulations to those students as well, student-athletes. And I also... Mr. Spatafino had shared with me a very nice letter from Debbie LaFawn, whom you know is at the Lunenburg Public Library. And she wanted just to take the opportunity to share about two wonderful volunteer experiences that happened at the library. Molly Smith and Samantha Layne volunteered at the library this year in the children's department. And she said, having had experience working with student volunteers over the past 12-plus years, they are two of the best students that she's ever had the pleasure of working with. They both had great work ethics, positive attitudes, and are very committed to completing assigned tasks thoroughly and in a timely manner. So, kudos to the school, she says, and the families, and just a thanks from recognizing those students and all of you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm missing that. What was it?
What was that one? From... Did you put it?
No.
The girl who was going to be on... Taking the camp?
I'll try to pull it.
What was her name? Oh, another person that we were going to recognize. Do you remember the email?
I apologize. I forgot that one.
What was her name?
Oh, yes, the leadership. I'm sorry. Yes, the MIA leadership.
If I knew her name, I'd... I forwarded it to you guys? I forwarded it to you all? But I don't know the name.
Gillian DeFrance. Thank you. Thank you for remembering that. But Gillian is a junior, soon to be a senior. She put that in her email, of course. And she was recently selected for the New England Student Leadership Conference run by the athletic associations all over New England, not just the Massachusetts. And only 300 students have been selected to attend a four-day residential camp at Worcester Street to help our athlete students promote positive experiences to all. During the camp, we will focus on healthy living, sportsmanship, teamwork, community service, respect, and many other qualities leadership possess. And she just wanted to make sure that she is planning to attend, and she really is looking forward to it and looks forward to bringing all the wonderful ideas back. And then, being the wonderful gracious woman she is, said she wanted to thank all of you for making Lunenburg a wonderful school atmosphere where students can make positive changes through the smallest of things. So, congratulations to Gillian. And thank you for prompting me to find that again. I would have been embarrassed not to recognize that. Now, I think we're done.
Yeah, we're done. So, we're going to push this other to the bottom unless I get something from our attorney. Okay, we're going to push her to the new business bottom. Sorry. So, we're on to the old business, and it's third reading of policy. Yeah, we have third reading of some and second reading.
Second, yes.
Which one is the third reading?
So, we have third reading of the policies, and I have them.
Oh, you have them.
The naming of facilities and spaces. So, that's policy 1203. And that also is the memorial, 1204. We have the additions under Community Relations about benefactors. So, that's 1302. Fundraising in the schools. And to that policy, we added the fundraising related to athletics, and that came out of the Athletic Advisory Committee. And is now, after the third reading, if adopted, it will be in policy. We have a new policy, Political Activity in School Buildings and on School Grounds, 1801. And Student Activity Accounts, 3201, was updated to reflect the most current regulations. We have added a key access and alarm code policy, 3503.1. It's the number on that. That's a new policy. And it outlines who can receive keys and access cards to any school facility, and that would be employees, just to highlight what's in here. And all other individuals must obtain the keys and then return them at the designated time within 24 hours. That would be for concession stands, et cetera. So, and a sign-out log will be maintained by the key custodians. Some of this is in practice already, but now it's been modified within the policy. And the display of athletic team awards was asking for from... Actually, it was one of the transition committees when we restructured and moved into this building, and then it went through the Athletic Advisory Committee as well as School Policy Committee. And it's about the display of athletic team awards. And that was then put into practice with third reading if it passes. And we included that caveat around any... If there are younger students on the team than the award states in the cabinet until that student will graduate. So, that, I think, is a most logical thing to do, and this helps keep things cleaned out and refreshed as well. And then, so those are all the third reading for adoption.
So, to approve them today?
Yes.
So, I need a...
I'll make a motion to approve all of the third reading policies as alumni base for implementation.
All in favor? And then, is the second reading?
The second reading is to add pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions as one of the protected conditions under our nondiscrimination statements. And so, what we did, or what I did, is go through, and I believe it's printed on the agenda, I listed all the policies that would be changed. On that list, it typically reads, on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, identity, age, sexual orientation, ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, special need, academic performance or proficiency in English language, or pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. So, that's how every one of those statements will be updated with regard to employment policies as well as student and nondiscrimination policies. And I sent this out to the principals as well and the secretaries to make sure they get it into the handbooks, because this is state law. It needs to be done. We'll go through three readings, so you'll have one more reading sometime. We have an upcoming reading, but it's really important to get it into all the handbooks. And I know Mr. Cassidy is going to be working hard next year on employee handbooks, so it'll appear in there as well. So, I recommend you waive the second reading.
I take a motion to waive the second reading?
Motion to waive second reading.
Second? I have to convert it. So, second reading of policies that are affected...
Yeah, policies that are affected by the pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions that were outlined in the agenda.
All in favor? So, now, would the track and field president?
Yes, and I'd like to, for those that don't know her, introduce Sandy Lussert, who you know as a former middle school physical education teacher in the district, former AD. She was a major... And now, she's moved on to that next chapter in her life and is working on pickleball instruction. She's got that going. Although, I think you've handled that a bit, haven't you, Sandy? A little bit. But Sandy, I know that you started this process proposing this naming of the track and athletic field probably well over a year ago. And you went to the school advisory council for the high school and received their support in the hall, but we were working on policy. And it happens to be one of the policies that we just approved. And so, thank you for your patience and for being here, and please give everyone an overview of what the proposal is.
I hope that everybody is happy. Because I don't really want to go... And I didn't do a PowerPoint or anything. First of all, again, my name is Sandy Lussert, and I just want to first reiterate that this is not just... I represent a wide group of people. This has been, like the superintendent said, this has been a process that we've been working on for over a year. I represent the former Lunenburg Track and Athletic Fields Association, board members of which is about seven, although we've dispersed, as well as a number of the members of the Miles for Miles Road Race Committee for the last 15 years, as well as some members of the Community Foundation that work with us for the grants. We actually still have grants for the schools to apply for for making good decisions and using monies for SAD or any other organization that would like to apply. We have those funds, and we would, you know, I'm constantly saying to people, "Please apply. We have some money." But just to... So, just so that you understand, this is not my... This is a group decision here. By the year, well, as things states, August of last year, we went first to the Parks Department because the project, for those of you that have not been around for a long time, started about 20 years ago, was a Parks Department and its community project, the Track and Athletic Field. The fields, part of it became a practice field hockey field. We did some drainage around the middle school, and we put a little small field in there. And those were basically the ones that we were working towards. With that, at the time, we... Many people had bantered around naming the facility and, you know, different reasons. We wanted to get it finished first, and it took, as you're all aware, it took a lot longer than everybody thought. So, as we all started aging and all started dispersing, we also wanted to make sure that it was remembered with some of the people and individuals that had a lot to do with it or in memory of somebody that had a lot to do with athletics in the town of Lunenburg. So, that's why we came up with the two individuals that were the names that we came up with. Mr. Mulligan, as you can see, was a teacher. He was athletic director. Mulligan was everything in the town of Lunenburg for many, many, many years. He's been recognized... He was recognized as Athletic Director of the Year, Mass State Coaches Hall of Fame, all sorts of things. So, we only thought it was appropriate to put the track part of it in his name. And as far as the field goes, when the field originated, it was a multipurpose field for everybody, you know, football. And now that we are very fortunate with the new school and with the new facilities, we've got lots of fields. It does tend to be a little bit more of a soccer field and lacrosse and many other things. But back, probably now 17 years ago, 16, 17 years ago, when a student, Miles, was tragically killed in an automobile accident, the family really wanted to do something, and it has become pretty much a community event and has stayed that for 17, 16, 17, 18 years now. I'm not even really sure how long. And as I said, we continue with the Community Foundation to support any kind of program or anything that students or teachers want to apply for that stems around that good decision-making and community types of things. So, it was our request to name the field in the Karen Field. The plaques themselves, I believe... Did you give them off? They are... If you were to enter the facility, you see the big red brick plaque that's there. It's all bronze, and it basically has a lot of the hired donors from the whole facility when it was put in. These, instead of doing a whole nother sign, a whole nother plaque, a whole nother, would be on the backside, and there would be basically two bronze plaques, one to... one to name McCarron Field and the other one to name Mulligan Track. So that has been, and we did go to the parks department when it was just under the parks department jurisdiction. And the superintendent comes, said we did, I did go back in the fall to the school advisory and, you know, just keep plugging away and looking for your, you know, support in this endeavor.
Thank you. I did notice, and I apologize, when I handed the copy for being copied, it was double-sided, but you only received one side of that presentation. But for the public, we did put out the two stat sheets that show both the field and the track recommendations.
What are we missing?
This only had one side, so this wasn't a hard copy. You received it, I know a little... But it doesn't have the entire presentation there. Or doesn't, mine did.
All right. It's only one side.
We have it.
Wait, no, you have it too. You just want to have some of it.
Huh?
She's just...
Two, three, four, five, six.
No, we only have four. Wait, we have this, is that part of it?
That was part of the, that was a part of the agenda.
So now we are missing two pages.
Okay.
What pages are we missing?
I don't know.
For the public, I just noticed, Sandy, you could bring those up here. Boy, this is like going out with a bag. The McCarron Field piece.
Oh, that's here.
No, that's the track.
We've got the track.
Okay, they're totally different tracks. The field, there you go.
There's the track.
There's the... All right, do you have any questions?
Ms. Weiss, I think you were, you were on the school advisory. You reported on this in the fall.
And what was the advisory?
At the time, the advisory was in favor of bringing this forward.
But did they say what they would do? Other than bringing it forward?
They voted, yeah, in the assembly in favor.
Do you, does anyone have any concerns, questions?
From my reading, it matches our newly adopted policy.
I was rereading that, yeah?
Absolutely.
So I would have no objection.
And where to take action on it this evening?
We put it on as an action item.
Do you have concern? I think the only concern that we have is that we just don't, I...
So that, so this does, this meets our criteria. My concern is, and I guess that's for us to look at as a committee moving forward, my concern is, will we be looking at naming so many different parts of our facility moving forward, having to inside of two years? It's not specific to this. It's, are we setting a precedent for our facilities?
This is the timing, it may appear to not set...
And that's my, that is my...
Even though this was...
This works for 20 years. Right, absolutely. But that's, that's my, and I may be alone in feeling that way, but I felt like I needed to say it. And just something to consider moving forward, any future requests, just that, you know...
I think the point of the policy, as best I can tell, is that something be dedicated to someone whose spirit and who has wrapped the community around that spirit continually. And I think that there is no better example of what you're looking for than naming these facilities for these two individuals. And I understand your precedent point, but this is the perfect example to hold up. This is the perfect example to say, this is what we're looking for. This, the track association has championed this for, you know, for 15 years. And it benefits our community continually. So to me, your point is, this is the standard bearer.
To give an example.
To give an example of what we're looking for.
In terms of facility name.
In terms of facility name.
And there's still, you know, our general policy would, you know, generally would prefer a annual scholarship or something like that.
Correct.
In that sphere.
Going forward.
Going forward. Yes.
Agreed, and that's what I was saying, in this, in this case, yes.
I think we're okay.
Yes.
I think that we're making it clear right now at a public meeting that this is not setting precedent that we will be naming facilities constantly going forward. We would prefer it in a scholarship form, if people would like to do that. In our policy, yes, a perpetual memorial. And our policy now is clear, that if they do want to, it has to be held to very high standards. Right? Do you all agree with that?
Yes, these are high standards.
And, you know, if I can interject just a personal anecdote to this, you know, I dedicated Buddy Bench to the primary school in memory of him. Not thinking about these broader implications of naming things after people. And then it was only until I sat in this committee that we started thinking about, what are the implications of doing this? That it actually became, actually a difficult decision. Like, you know, I look back now, had I been on the school committee at that time with that policy, I would not have agreed to it for Buddy Bench dedication. So it is an emotional and difficult decision to make. And I think we have a very solid policy. And this does certainly represent the ideal as a standard bearer. And we do have our preference for perpetual memorials.
No, and I feel much better moving forward now that we've, you know, had that discussion among us to help us move forward.
Okay. So I need, so we're going to move forward on approving the naming of these two facilities. And I would like the motion to do just that.
I can make that motion.
Okay.
I would like to move that the field, the athletic field, be named in McCarron Field in honor of Miles McCarron. And I would like to move that the track be named Mulligan Track in honor of Richard Mulligan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Chair, I think you have a representation of the plaques that would signify that. You have the size, the...
The size, color.
You have material. So I think it's also a good practice for the committee to take a vote on this, and this is what it absolutely needs to be. And this is, this is very clear.
Okay, so should we vote on this signage?
Yes.
We would like, okay, so I'd take a motion to vote on the signage that will be put up in regard to the naming of the facilities.
I approve that we accept the signage as presented to us in the naming of these facilities.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll attach these to the minutes.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be formally on the record with all the details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie, can I ask a question? How long will it take for you to get the signage? Now that it's approved?
Well, they've had the proof for a year. Once we give them the okay to do it, we have a gentleman that will mount those on the back. Now, given the fact that school is out, we were not thinking of like a huge presentation, but just having families and anyone else, probably, I would say, probably in the fall, putting something together. And obviously, we'd like, we'd run it by you first to let, you know, because we want to keep it, put it out to anyone in the community. Because there's a lot of people that have gone through Lunenburg Public Schools that know them, and, you know, want to give people a fair enough heads up that we, when we do decide to do the dedication. So I'm thinking in the fall at this point.
Okay. If you do it in the fall, you might consider contacting the PTO to coincide with the...
That could be the end point.
You know, I don't remember, like, to put the plaque before the horse. Make sure...
They're trying to meet right now to start the...
But that would be the...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Oh, onto the line, I didn't budget.
Ms. Chair Cassidy is here to...
Good evening, everyone. What you have in your packet tonight is the, I guess it's still a proposed final budget for FY '18 for the school department, personnel and non-personnel budget. Just a process that started approximately six months ago. Has been presented to the school committee a couple of different times. Has gone through town meeting. And now, from what I understand, we've got the allocation from the town. The superintendent and I have prepared a line item proposal for you to look at. So what I want, what I want to bring to your attention is there are some slight changes since the last time you've seen this budget. So you'll hear me say this so many times, you'll get sick of it. But over time, things become more clear. And when we presented our budget in December, there were some unknowns. And we weren't sure of the resignations and the retirements. And we were able to incorporate a lot of those savings into the budget. So what I'd like to do is just highlight a couple of the personnel changes that we're making, that were approved at the, or presented at town meeting. And once again, the line item, the total budget has not changed at all. So now we're just, we're shifting money around in places that we needed now that we know, now things are more clear. So on page one, I just want to bring to your attention, we're proposing a new line item, which is $6,000 in webmaster stipends. These are stipends that are going to be associated with the LEA contract. It's hiring five webmasters, one at central office, high school, middle school, elementary, and primary.
This associated with the master teacher?
That's separate.
Yeah, totally separate. So this is, this will be a posted stipend. And each site will have a designated webmaster that will update the website. And really, my feeling is that the principal will supervise that person as far as content, information. So that's what, that's what it's going to look like. At central office, it'll be the superintendent directing somebody to do that.
Is this going to be piggybacked on the town's new website at all? In terms of format and...
I think that's part of the conversation. You know, it looks like we're going to try to piggyback on some of those changes and have a similar look at all the same sites. So they'll be working in tangent. So you, the look at the elementary school will probably be very similar to the middle school with, as I'll say, the content relatively the same. So as parents and their students go from school to school, they'll know exactly where to go to get that information.
The high school has had a webmaster for many, many years. What hasn't happened until this is being put in place is that every other school will be able to put a webmaster in place as well as the district office having a webmaster in place.
So on page two, at the top of the page, under category 2305, primary school teachers. We are going to six students of kindergarten? So that, so we're moving a grade one teacher to the, in that salary, to that line item. So it's just flipping that line. Under the, under the elementary teachers and middle school teachers and at the high school, there have been some resignations that have reduced those accounts for us. Same for special education teachers at the high school. We've had some resignations. On page three, because we're expanding a classroom at the primary school level in kindergarten, we need a new power. So it's a new position that was never talked about before. So I want to bring that to your attention. So that line item is going up. I'll talk about primary school special ed paraprofessionals. Right now, we're aware of one resignation. So that line item has gone down. And the 2357 professional development stipends, we bring, that is a new line that is being presented to you tonight for 2925. That is for the foreign language task force for next year. And then superintendent, that is the development of curriculum relative to foreign language at the middle and high school. And finally, on page four, under section 3520, after-school advisor salaries, that amount has gone up significantly to offset some of our advisors that are being paid at our high school. Currently, some of, they're being paid under choice. We're trying to, we've had some extra money that will enroll into the local account. So that's a summary of our personnel line item changes.
Can you just tell me how many people are resigned?
You know, I didn't print that out, but I do have this spreadsheet.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious, how many people?
So we've had eight retirements this year. So we've had eight retirements this year.
Retirements?
Excuse me, let me rephrase that. We've had eight retirements over the last, toward the end of this year, school year. So in June, there was a custodian that retired at the beginning of June. Of course, our superintendent, our primary school principal, and our athletic director, one parent, and three teachers.
What about resignations, people just leaving?
We've had our cap manager at the Turkey Hill Elementary School has resigned. We lost a math science teacher at our middle school. A paraprofessional resigned at our middle school. As you know, Brian Spatafino is resigned. A parent at our ACE program is taking a teaching position, has a teaching opportunity in the district. Our special ed teacher at the high school has resigned, and a high school teacher, a sped teacher at high school has resigned.
Okay.
So I will say this to you, that most of those are reflected in this budget. I have to say, there's two that were just received as a district, and we weren't able to incorporate these, because we had released the budget last week. It's not a lot of money, but, you know, it's, it's just a timing thing.
Related to this discussion too, as you know, we initially put a freeze on all new hiring.
Yeah.
Because of where we were at and the needs that were present, that more is known at this point in time. We accommodated the biggest liability in terms of potential loss, and that was around the Title I program, and that's reflected in these numbers. So at this point in time, I would recommend that we remove that hiring freeze. We've been doing it position by position, but you're poised now to have the ability to put the other positions out there, as long as you stay within or below the amount of money that was allocated for that. So I think you can remove, we can remove that freeze at this point in time. Mr. Cassidy, there still are going to be changes, probably. You will see some more resignations, quite possible, as people accept other jobs or have events in their lives that would cause them to move on. How will that be processed going forward for the committee? Because they'll vote this line item budget, so how does that become accounted for going forward?
Well, there's also another piece, because once we remove the hiring freeze, I'll be posting these positions. So they may get a number of internal transfers as well. So if we've got resignations, people may be going to another district. Maybe our internal transfers, so someone who's making higher salaries going to another location, which is not budgeted at some point in the future. And it was funny, I was looking through my notes, probably sometime in October, the dust will settle, and everyone will stop moving, and everyone will be in their spot. And at that point, in that point in time, I'll come to the committee with an explanation of why we're increasing and decreasing amounts. And I anticipate it'll just be people moving, new hires in those salary adjustments. So, you know, last October, it was kind of new to me, but I am keeping track of this information. You know, I will be able to report every single move that we've made going forward as it relates to budgets.
Have you had an hour?
I've got it covered.
Okay.
Thank you.
I say October, and I don't know if that was done, because that's when I came on board. Obviously, if I know sooner, I'll do it sooner, in September or early October. I'll report back to you for any line item adjustments as it relates to the salary and wages.
And obviously, we don't know right now what our new superintendent, or the number is.
Right.
Yeah. So that's taken into account, right?
Right. And what is also, you know, Mr. Spatafino's salary is still the same in there for the interim that we are about to hire. And Mr. McCollough's salary is still in there for the interim AP too. But it doesn't mean we have to suspend all that.
Okay.
Depends on the applicant and that whole process. So we can, I will present any adjustments that we need to make. And we'll say, this is our non-personal, there were a number of little changes that were made. We looked at the equity, and I had reported out that we were level funded. Every school was level funded. I was slightly incorrect, and the middle school received a little bit more money. So we opened that formula up again, and we made some final adjustments. Nothing significant, nothing major, just hundreds, maybe a couple thousand dollars here and there. It's, once again, the bottom line for the non-personnel budget remains untouched. And any of the changes that were basically at the school-based level, insurance wasn't None of the superintendent's supply accounts were increased. It was just kind of a shifting of dollars within the elementary, middle and primary school.
You do, because then it goes into munis and it just, it's important that the line item amounts be identified, so purchasing and payroll can start the process when the calendar turns to July 1.
Not July?
Yeah. And as Mr. Cassidy said, if anything changes, they need to come back here for a line item transfer. And so it would be very transparent and explicit.
Motion to approve the FY19 line item budget as outlined by Mr. Cassidy.
Second?
All on paper?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
It was six months.
Yeah.
I think it was not.
I have a feeling.
It was longer, it was longer, but presenting to the committee, you've seen this for six months.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So we have new business charter review report. We, so, yes, we'll give it.
So we'll just carry that under topics of future discussion? Is that how you'd like?
Yeah.
Yes.
High school improvement plan and handbook?
I can review the handbook changes if you'd like me to go through them. Particularly, on page 24, students currently, if the handbook says students are required to purchase their own locks for lockers, the recommendation from the high school is to change required to encourage. And with regard to page 28, we're taking out some language that was just in there for transition when we moved back from providing heat and credit for participation in varsity sports and marching band. So that had been in there, because that started with the class of 2017. So it hasn't applied to any of the classes for a matter of years now, since they graduated two years ago now. So it's time for it just to be removed out of there. Under report cards, there's some reworking since Power School provides an opportunity for course grades to be available throughout the year, and it just says that students are expected to discuss their grades with their parents and guardians, and they're encouraged to also check their grades regularly. Page 35, academic progress reports will be deleted, and that's because of the technology that we now have that really makes that obsolete. Notification of student absences, the language has changed just slightly. It used to say, parents are asked to telephone the high school. It's changed to, parents are to telephone the high school in the event of student absence or tardiness. And then under tardiness, there's further clarification about reporting after 8:30 a.m., that there needs to be a note from the parent or guardian, or the parent needs to call the student in tardy. So they're tightening up with regard to the attendance and the tardiness guidelines. Students who are less than 20 minutes tardy to class will receive one half-class absence, and after five occurrences, students are subject to office detentions. Students that are more than 20 minutes late to class will receive a full class absence. It adds language about submission of doctor's notes. They should be received by the main office for absences and tardies within three days of occurrence or the appointment. And on page 39, let me double check, under senior privileges, this is what it's referring to. It just said that senior privileges, I'd say it's changing there, reviewed at the end of each quarter for senior privilege to be able to continue. And some additional language with regard to fire drills, just including ALICE drills. Fire drills and ALICE drills are, will be held, so it's calling out the ALICE drills in addition to the fire drills. And then, under detention, an addition, the following, students are to report to detention on the day that it's assigned. If a student is absent or dismissed from school, it is their responsibility to report to detention the following day. If there's a conflict, it is the student's responsibility to make arrangements with the detention monitor. So you know the changes to the handbook, and when you see a pattern developing, a lack of clarity around what's written and what the expectations are, and so these are the recommendations from the high school. I know they have a committee that works on this with Mr. McGrath, the assistant principal, takes the lead on the handbook revisions, and that's what's being recommended, and I would recommend them to you for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the handbook changes?
I see where it was on the agenda as well. It's down there, right there, but under number 10.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve FY19 high school improvement plan and handbook updates as outlined.
I've got to the handbook.
No, just the handbook.
Oh, for handbook.
Handbook.
So we're doing them separately, not one with the other?
Sorry.
I'll second the handbook.
All on paper?
Aye.
Okay. So the school improvement plan, after the NEAS visit, they did put together the, I guess it was skeleton, the school improvement plan, with the goals that they'll be working on, and those were responsive to the strategic plan, as well as to the NEAS self-study. The faculty needs to work on the underlying objectives that will really outline all the activities towards those goals. And Mr. Spatafino said that had there not been a change in the administration, he probably would have said that that would be to the committee by December, but given the changes of the high school administration, that you should consider January as being the date for that full plan to come to you for final approval. So tonight, you can tentatively approve, you can approve the plan with the goals as articulated, with the expectation that the remainder of the plan needs to come forward for approval by January of 2019. I have to get clarification on that as well.
Yes, can you tell?
In the proposed school improvement plan, if you go to page 36, Mr. Spatafino put together the numbers on the MCAS data, and he gave some explanations of how to read this, with the starred data being the spring 2017, so we haven't received back yet the 2018. So that's clear. Now, what wasn't clear, and I read this several times, and I had to call him to ask him as well, what's in parentheses is 2015, and then the red outside of the parentheses is 2016. So you have three years of data. And so you have in black and starred, the 17, just red is 16, and then in parentheses in red is 2015.
Okay.
So I wasn't the only one that had trouble with that. So I gave him some, I suggested to him that he change this to make this more understandable.
Yeah, because you could easily add the three numbers and know that it's three sequential years. Three years, correction.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Just putting a dash between the numbers would do it, the percentages.
Yeah, right. I'm just writing it up there like that.
Right. Exactly. So we can have him make that adjustment.
All right. Because that is hard to decipher.
I agree.
As written. Okay, we can't ask him questions about this, though. He's not here. All right, so...
Did the school council, the school council talk?
They looked at it.
Did they talk to that?
Yeah, they looked at it. The goals were the ones that they presented, but it was the same skeleton, it just didn't have all the data in it.
Didn't have the data?
Right.
Oh, no, okay, so you didn't see the data before?
Right.
So you can't decipher it for us, or have any extra data?
No, I don't have anything extra to add to that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so we don't have 2017 SATs?
SATs weren't included in that.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve the skeleton, and then with this?
Yeah, change, absolutely.
Or how it's going to look next, like this? Okay? Do you see?
Yeah, we'll get rid of the stars and the colors and all of that. Just have it just 17, and they'll have 18 soon.
Very good.
So the title is...
Will they update it with the 18?
Yes, they should come with three years of data.
Okay.
At least. And it should just go sequentially with the diagonal between the two.
And Mr. Spatafino is not here, because he's heading time with his staff.
That is correct.
For his last, their last day.
And he was most appreciative, Madam Chair, of you supporting that.
Yeah, so if he was here, I'm sure he'd give us a good, you know, career, yes, I'm sure he would. But if you have any questions for him, feel free to email him your questions in regards to the data.
And the skeleton of this will be put up on the website.
Okay.
So in August, when folks come back, the skeleton will be there with the goals, well, not the goals, the goals are there, the objectives.
Right.
To come in January.
I will say and remind that the growth areas and the goals that were put on here were based on the NEAS process that they were going through. So these didn't just come out of thin air, they actually were going through the process of deciding where their strengths and their areas of growth were. I guess that's why it seems to help you as much.
Good.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Luenberg High School 2018, 2019 school improvement plan, the skeleton that's here relative to the goals and objectives, with the expectation that we'll have a completely reformatted or completely filled-out document in January.
Of 2019?
Of 2019.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. All on paper?
Aye.
Oh, fall sports waivers. We thought you'd email with all the numbers.
You did.
Did you see the numbers?
Yes. Yes. And I'm pleased to announce that Mr. Spatafino, acting athletic director, reported to me that this was the largest fall sign-up night that they've had. Cheerleading had nine, cross-country four, golf seven, field hockey twenty-six, girls' soccer twenty-nine, boys' soccer thirteen, football twenty-nine. So Mr. Spatafino suggests that we put in waivers for the sports because of the timing of how all of this works, that they have tryouts, high school only students to try out, to see what that brings in terms of the final numbers for the teams, and then make a determination with the school committee permission to move forward with any waivers beyond that for eighth graders. And he indicated that the ninth graders, or the eighth graders, so this year's seventh graders, were notified of that process, that there shouldn't be any expectation about participation until after the tryouts happened, and also that the eighth graders were not participating during the summer camps, during the captains' practices. So that's his recommendation at this time.
So it looks like that it's unlikely that we'll need the waivers?
For some of the sports, yeah.
Like cross-country? As for? Football, you have a larger number than that.
That's a pretty low number for football. Boys' soccer is very low.
Which is surprising.
But girls' soccer and field hockey look pretty strong.
Yeah.
And cheerleading, I think that's kind of open in terms of the number that can participate.
So for these waivers, though, we're talking about only eighth grade, correct?
Cross-country, I believe, was a seventh grade.
That's one of the lowest numbers. When are the fall tryouts, approximately?
They're typically that Thursday, Friday, sometimes Saturday, Monday, right before school start. Like, literally, the days before. I know.
That's the, they're all, they're all.
Soccer's the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, I believe, yeah.
That's the MIA rule.
Yes, it's like, literally, days before.
It's written there.
But you know that stuff took over the summer. I was thrilled to hear and see so many folks showing up on June eleven for the fall night because a lot of times that isn't, that doesn't produce a lot. So it was great to see many more than usual. But hopefully, you know, by outlining the guidelines and procedures more clearly, it will make things run smoother into tryouts.
So for cross-country, do we, can we see where it falls with after the eighth grade? Because.
If you get the waiver, isn't it for seven? It gives you the option on seven, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It does.
It does. So it's not just having a waiver for eight. It's getting the waiver gives you the seven, eight option.
Okay, so we don't have to have the sevens on that one if we got numbers that were higher grade grade?
Correct. I think that can be too terrible. Because they're such low numbers in that particular sport.
I know, but we have a middle school cross-country program there that they can.
Also, it's a club, it's an after-school activity.
Right. I just think that there's plenty of time to go to high school athletics, and seventh grade is so young.
The other thing that hopefully we can do.
I think that might be something to consider from a coach's perspective. I know there, I've heard coaches talk about this to some degree in terms of where some of the students are in their physical development at that point in time, particularly young women, that's starting to be one of the peak times in terms of their running capacities. And so there is logic and reason around either opening or not opening. I am not qualified and don't feel comfortable talking in greater detail around that. I think that the committee needs more information and should get that information from the coach and the new ID before a final decision is made. I would recommend that it's fine to go at this point in time, include seventh grade in that waiver application, but then make the final determination after you have more information.
Okay. And so that would be the only one with seventh grade, though?
It would be, yes.
That's the only one?
That would be the only one.
So my other question is, can we ask our acting athletic director, as well as our new interim athletic director once they come onboard, to continue to put out communication, reminding folks, if you haven't gotten in all of your paperwork and payment, to please do, you know what I mean? Just as, you know, a few reminders over the summer, just so that hopefully, before tryouts, you know, to avoid that, you know, coming to tryouts or going to the second day of tryouts before handing in paperwork, just more communication, I think, facility.
And that's very doable with our messenger system in terms of setting that template that basically just puts it out there each time and reminding folks and going that direction. I think that we, I'll talk to Mr. Spatafino about that tomorrow. He can set up the template, and then they can put reminders on the calendar because the office person or Mr. McGrath can send those out as well.
Oh, okay.
They can probably even schedule them. I'm not sure how far in the future. I know you can schedule those for future release. I just am unclear how far forward you can do.
Right.
Okay? Thank you. It's a good idea.
So we need to make a motion then to approve? I'll make a motion to approve the fall sports waivers.
As presented. At this time. Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, E A.
Oh, yes. We have a ratified memorandum of agreement around the FMLA, MPLA, and FNLA statutory leaves. I think the committee is aware for the public's information. This is an area that, you know, when people are accessing these leaves, we want to make sure that everybody's clear on how those leaves are accessed and what are the terms of those sleeves, and what's paid and what's not paid. And our, the prior policy or in the contract, not the policy, but the contract language, left some people confused. And when people are having medical situations with their family or otherwise, I think it's really important that we have real clear language that everybody understands what to expect from that process. And we work with the LEA and have language that we feel will take care of that, and I recommend approval of this memorandum of understanding. And as I said, the Lunenburg Educators Association has already approved it. There's two to sign. I covered up where the LEA is signed. So I want to make sure you guys sign on the right side. But do recommend approval.
Okay, so we just, we don't need to make a motion? Do we just sign it as approval, or should we still recommend, we still?
You can go ahead and put a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement.
I would move to ratify the memorandum of agreement dealing with the leaves as described in.
By the superintendent.
Thank you.
I'll say.
All in favor? So that was great. Yeah, lunch is starting. Okay. So, oh, we're up to public comment. Do we have any public comments from the public? None? No comment? None? Do we have any reports?
None for high school.
None for middle schools, but I do have something for the primary principal search.
Okay, well, wait, first, does any committee, none? Okay, we have no council report. Okay, primary principal search.
So last Thursday, we had both candidates, Don Marie Ailes and Bonnie Faulkner, at the primary school. They were met with the public, they answered questions, they made presentation. The committee met, we invited Dr. Burnham to attend, gave her an opportunity to meet both candidates as well. We met after the public forum and shared our opinion. We went over the feedback we received, which was positive for both candidates. And Dr. Burnham will be, obviously, meeting with the individuals and conducting interviews before she makes her final decision. But at this point, it was very positive from both candidates and the feedback that we received.
Okay. Let's go to the buzzer bag. That's just a.
And off to middle school athletics for the.
Oh, yes, middle school athletics.
For topic.
Middle school athletics. Should that gets on there?
That'll be on, go ahead.
And then the charter review report.
Yeah.
Just period on that.
Okay. Now, we don't know how to handle our discussion regards to the contract. I have to speak with them about the contract and figure, is that something, can we go into an executive session right now? It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. It wasn't.
No.
I don't think you can.
I don't think we can.
No.
No. Because it's just not on there.
You could schedule a special meeting to do that and.
Yeah.
Because you don't have, you don't have the final contract present at this point.
No, and I have, I, we have too much to talk about in regards to, because I just got the meeting. So we have to schedule a special meeting.
And we probably post it, right?
Yeah.
We can post it.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So you could do it Monday if, if it's for your schedules.
You're gone on?
I won't be here either.
But there's no way you can do a Saturday meeting?
I won't be here.
You won't be here? Where, when will you be back? When are you leaving?
He's gone.
You're gone on vacation?
There's four, we just need four.
I'd rather not discuss dates in a public.
No, no, that's fine. I just, no, I just need somebody to stand that. Yeah, we can do, okay.
If Jim's willing to do that, Mr. Levesque's ready, remote participation.
Yeah, we can do remote participation, absolutely, I can call it.
Well, can you? You can call in too? On Monday?
It says a specific time, the tryouts for the captain.
Right.
You'd have a quorum present.
Yes, we would have a present quorum on Monday?
Yes.
At what time? What's Monday?
The twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth. So you'd post for, to begin the meeting, and you'd call it to order, go into executive session, and then come out with the action item perhaps?
Yes. Then, yes, because we can't, yeah, we can't do it right now. So what, six? You guys want it to be six?
Whatever works for you, ma'am.
I'm free, I, you know, whatever works for you guys, too. What about you two, who will be calling in? Doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter, time.
Six, then let's just do it.
Six is.
Okay.
So I'm thinking of the logistics of the calling, so we'll work all through that and make sure that we're compliant with the policy and temp, policy around how that remote participation works. I know the public needs to be able to hear, you know, what the individual is offering at the, and so we'll get that set up for you.
Okay.
Okay, six, did you decide six o'clock?
Well, they need to hear us vote to go into.
Go to the roll call board?
Right, and then.
Just a question. So we should start this in open discussion?
Sorry.
So is there a reason why we skipped Dr. Burnham's contract approval?
We don't have a contract to approve. That's what we're, we're talking about. We have been waiting, and we thought we were going to have something, we have nothing right now.
So is that kind of why other things haven't been put in place, like the principal accepting out, the new primary principal?
Yeah, that would never, I don't understand, that one wasn't going to happen until she signed a contract.
Okay.
So until she's working for other candidates.
And we made that, yes, we made that clear when we were hiring, that Superintendent Combs was not making that appointment.
Right, yes, I knew that, yeah.
Okay.
So kind of contingent on getting this contract and having this.
We were hopeful we'd have enough information to discuss tonight.
Yeah. Beforehand?
Yes.
Beforehand, okay, is not. Seven o'clock does not count.
And, yeah, and I don't think Dr. Burnham can make the decision until, or make the hiring decision until after her official start date, not necessarily just after the signing of the contract.
She has not seen an official contract to look at.
She's only seen.
Well, to that.
Right, addressed, addressed.
Oh, okay.
And then there was a counter.
There's negotiation involved, and that's what we're at.
Right. But to bring to them information that I just got at seven oh three.
Can I clarify something that you said? Am I understanding correctly, because this seems to be the forum to get the best information that we're not, we haven't received, that Dr. Burnham will not be hiring any administrator until after July first? Is that what you're saying?
She can do, after she signs the contract, she could make a call, but that person would not, nothing would happen until after she signs her, after she starts.
So after July first?
Right, well, she could call a candidate, yes.
She can talk to a candidate after she signs, she can't make a decision until after she's officially.
It would not be a formal decision until after she's, after her first, her start.
July first.
She could contact someone after she signs her contract, or talk to people after she signs her contract. She just, it would not be formal until her start date. No formal announcement or anything like that until after her start date.
I hear that.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we thought we would have a contract in hand today. I have been asking her, it's just that there was, she's still working, okay? She's got until next Wednesday to work at their school district, so it's hard to get her.
They're in session.
Yeah, they're in school session.
Day with students isn't until next.
Next Wednesday.
The twenty-seventh.
Yeah. So it's been hard for our attorney to reach her during the day and to make these negotiations happen. That's what we've been dealing with.
Oh, yeah, she, she got clearly. That cleared it up, but I just hadn't heard that information prior to this meeting.
Yeah. So, yeah. So unfortunately, that didn't happen. I thought it would, I thought he was trying to get something together, but he has also been doing other negotiations for superintendents the last few weeks, so. So that's where we're standing right now. So I'll take a motion to adjourn on Monday at six.
Motion to adjourn at eight twenty-nine.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.